Vacant space up on our second floor that we're currently using and we started the conversion to a training room. So we're asking to use forfeiture funds to complete this or to complete the second phase of this conversion to a training room. Many benefits to doing this, it allows us to train our police officers in a much more professional environment. And it is also a potential to have a revenue stream for the city because we envision this being a regional training center. We've got a lot of smaller agencies in our area who don't have a place to train their officers and they have to go out and purchase or buy training space in other places. So this will give us an opportunity to shop this training center in this area out to other police departments as a revenue source. And when police departments and other agencies use training centers in other places, they give free training slots to officers at those agencies. So this gives us an opportunity to train our officers for free as well in certain areas. Costs are a little bit under $20,000 and again, we want to use forfeiture funds to do this. And available to take any questions that you may have about this.
Counsel? Seeing none, we will... [inaudible]
If there's a training room, that would be having people come in to educate, train, that type of thing as opposed to maybe workout room and that kind of thing. In your building, you have, in your building, you have workout rooms, range, and is there no more room down there? Is it all filled up down there?
A little bit of both, sir. So basically, we would be having outside trainers come in, but also it allows us to have physical training in there as well. For example, if we have some physical contact type of training and we can open the room up, put the mats down, and we can do those types of training also.
Yes, I think, because you have that downstairs, that part of it, don't you?
Yes, we have a part of that down there. This will, this will like, this will give us an opportunity to really expand what we're doing in those areas of training. Downstairs, we have a range and we have other spaces, but much smaller spaces. This opens it up so we can do some much more comprehensive type training with the officers.
I have an objection.
All right, seeing none, this will be on the agenda for later tonight. Purchase of vehicles from any police department?
And the second item is seeking authorization to purchase replacement vehicles for the police department. We're looking at 13 vehicles total. Eight of those vehicles will be patrol vehicles, all SUVs, and the other five will be plane vehicles for detectives. None of these vehicles are take-home vehicles, it's just a part of the normal cycling of our police fleet.
Any questions, counsel? Seeing none, this item will also be on the agenda. Item number C, uh, three.
The third item, as this counsel knows, the police department is a part of the Clemis Consortium. And what this is, is a, an organization that manages the information systems for all of the law enforcement agencies in Oakland County. And as part of managing this, these information systems, they handle our crime mapping, our computer-aided dispatch, and also our police reports. So when a police report is taken in our city, instead of coming to our records department to get a copy of these police reports, the involved drivers go through a web-based system through Clemis, purchase these accident reports, and Clemis forwards a portion of those costs back to the agencies involved. So at this point, we've accumulated somewhere around $75,000 or so in this fund, and these funds can be used for any police-related purposes. And so we've outlined a number of purposes that we have that we want to use these funds for, and I won't go through all of them, you know, we have them all listed. I can answer any questions about any of these that you have. But just to summarize some of these things, the Guardian Tracking is a personnel tracking software system. This is one that I'm very, very excited about because it allows me to really track activities in my offices. We can track discipline, citizen complaints, citizen compliments, training records, and it allows me to connect the dots with activities that my officers are involved in so that we can make sure we give them the appropriate training or if there's appropriate outside help that some officers may need as a result of this, I can really track these types of things. So that's what the Guardian Tracking is about. We've got a cell phone extraction, I've got one of my experts here to talk about that, if you have any questions about that. Two items for our animal control officer, he's here to talk about those. Desktop computers for the laser scanner that we have, and computers for, or laptops and tablets for our detectives, GPS tracking device for our officers primarily working in our auto theft unit. And speed signs. We are, right now, we have three electronic speed signs that are deployed in various areas of the city. This will, if counsel allows, will allow us to purchase an additional five electronic speed signs to place around the city. So I'm here to answer any questions about any of those items that you have, and if I can't answer them, I have experts here to answer those.
It's commendable.
The speed signs, have you seen a decrease in speeding issues? Or what have you noticed with the, because I've seen them at Evergreen and other places, just wondering what impact they've made.
Well, my traffic officers are telling me is that they have been modifying and impacting driving behaviors in a positive way. In other words, in the places that we've placed our speed signs, our traffic complaints have gone down. Now, we're in the process of extracting data from these speed signs also, so we can get a more comprehensive and more scientific kind of analysis of what is happening there. But anecdotally, what we're seeing is that it has been impacting positively behaviors.
And then with this Guardian software, I know you and I have had conversations about when people call it not an emergency line, and they would report, say, hey, you know, LFA is a perfect example, but nothing was taken, it's just more of making the police aware, they don't want to file a report or anything. Is that something that this software would track as well? Would this track, I guess, any calls or anything that came into the police department?
Absolutely. It's tailored to the agency and whatever our preferences are in terms of data or activities that we track. So absolutely, that could be one thing, because I think you and I had talked about, there was some, some of our customers weren't so happy with the customer service at our front desk, and it was related to certain types of calls that we were getting. So what this would allow me to do is to track all of these different types of calls, track the complaints that are associated with these calls, and see if there's some kind of link between either A, the types of calls that are causing these complaints, or the officers involved that are involved in these complaints so that we can make the appropriate adjustments.
Okay. Personally, I think that's great. We use it out for us, so we can actually see, hey, you know, people are calling about specific claims data, or we can tailor it down as detailed as we want, and it does help with training, it helps with trying to find a problem in the system. So I think it's, I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Chief, just one additional question, and only forensic extraction software. I know you have something in the house now, so is this, will this bring us inland with current state of the art with respect to, well, let's just, we hear these cases all over, because when something bad happened, and Apple won't release some code or CIA, you know, these kinds of things. Does this bring us closer to reality as we're dealing with our environment?
And I have Detective Mike Morris here to answer any questions.
Good evening, Detective Michael Morris. I am currently assigned to the Digital Forensics Lab in the Southfield Police Department, Detective Bureau. This product that we are requesting is an extension of a product that we currently are using. So I have a number of forensic machines in my office that are able to perform these kinds of extractions, and the purpose of these extractions is to take data from cellphones and computers and then use that data as evidence in a criminal proceeding. So one of the problems we have is throughput, so because there, we only have one machine right now that can do, we can basically do one phone at a time, is a good way to put it. We're finding that more and more prosecutors want a phone done almost in every case, and so this machine that we are requesting is going to give us two capabilities. The first capability is it's going to allow me to work on two phones at one time, which is, which is going to be very helpful as far as my workload. The second capability is it's going to allow us to take this technology mobile if we ever find ourselves, which has happened in the past, in a incident response kind of framework as opposed to a static lab environment. So right now, if I want to do an exam, I make a requisition for property, we obtain the evidence, and then I perform my exam in the office in a very controlled environment. This piece of technology will allow us to go out into the field and do incident response and get the same data in the field, which is a capability that we very much need. As far as extending our capabilities, technically, it would not. This is, this is simply a duplicate of a product that we already have. If at any time anybody wants to get information about additional capabilities, I'd be more than happy to meet individually or in a group to talk about that.
And Chief, I don't want to get too far into numbers here, but the Auto Task Force will reimburse us $7,050 because of we've been in this. I think it's stated there that the cost of the software is $14,000. And Oakland County Auto Task Force will reimburse us for half of that.
Yes, let me get to those, are you talking, which items are you talking about?
Forensic, the forensic cell phone extraction software.
Oh, okay, oh, yes. Yeah, there's, the task force has identified a link between some of the things that they're doing with their duties and how this can benefit them. We would own the equipment, but for them to have use of this, they're willing to, they're willing to contribute, partially fund the cost of the equipment. And it's, and the same thing when you, when we go down into the GPS tracking devices, same thing with that, when they've established a link with that as well.
Okay, all right. Appreciate you and your staff keeping us on the forefront of police technology.
Thank you. Any other questions? Are there any other questions?
No, I'm not seeing any, just go through the agenda. Item number four, around here.
We have a PowerPoint presentation for you. Great job. Good evening, honorable counsel. The city of Southfield received a request from Sam Abis of Abis Oil Investments. He's the owner of 30915 Southfield Road. It's a gas station that came before City Council. They were approved to rebuild their facility, and during the reconstruction phase, he encountered some difficulties in his project that added some costs. And so he came to the city Brownfield Authority asking for some assistance. And Elizabeth with PM Environmental is here for a presentation, she's going to provide us. We brought it to our Brownfield Redevelopment Authority last week, and we've met with our city assessor. And so at this time, we have a short presentation, and then we would like to set a public hearing for February 26th. So turn it over to Elizabeth.
Good evening.
Elizabeth, please keep your name and name and address.
Yep, Elizabeth Masering, I'm with PM Environmental, 4080 West 11 Mile Road in Berthel, Michigan. So to give you a quick overview, the property that we'll be discussing this evening is the former mobile gas station on the southwestern corner of 13 Mile Road and Southfield Road. It's right at the entryway to Southfield, coming from Beverly Hills to the north. The property has been occupied by various gas station and service stations since the 1950s. The most current is, is proposed to be a 39 to 100 square foot reconfiguration of the convenience store and the addition of a restaurant space tenant to complement that use. The entire project entails the ground-up demolition and complete replacement of the underground storage tank system at the property, the expansion of the property, and an investment of $1.5 million. Upon completion, it's estimated that between the convenience store space and the restaurant space, that 17 full-time equipment jobs and 15 construction jobs will be completed. I'm not sure if many of you are familiar with the developer, Sam, but he's been a pretty lifelong business partner to the city of Southfield. He's operated at that corner for over 20 years, and he's owned the physical property itself since 2004. This project is something that he's been working on for several years. He initially had come before planning commission in 2015. We've hit many roadblocks along the way, just with the cost of construction going up, there being more demolition than was anticipated at the site, encountering water that needed to be removed from the site. And so as we've gone through these multiple iterations, he's been, before City Council for approval in 2006, and needed to renew that permitting process in 2017 upon some of those initial delays. We came into the picture in the summer of this year when he did go to replace the existing underground storage tank system at the property. Those old tanks have been in there since 1984. I mean, as part of this, you know, he was doing, he was doing the building footprint itself and wanted to make sure that the tanks and the entire system got upgraded at that time as well. When we did go in there to do that work, we discovered a release associated with that, and that's something with compliance with the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, Sam is working to clean up and making sure that that gets closed in an appropriate manner and that's separate from this request, but is definitely a huge expense that he has undertaken and didn't anticipate on the onset of the project. So as Shelley mentioned, we had brought this to the city and to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and viewed Brownfield as a mechanism to help offset some of the costs that he's encountered. The request within the Brownfield Plan, within the agenda packet, involves the reimbursement of activities associated with some of that demolition, asbestos abatement, some infrastructure work that he's doing along the public right-ofways, some of the sidewalks, the water and sewer mains, some public lighting, and as well as the site prep at the site. The Brownfield Plan proposes utilizing the taxable value for this coming year. Post-development taxable value estimate has been provided by the city assessor's office. This request is only for capture of a portion of the taxes being generated at the property, so it's anticipated that around $300,000 of that will be preserved during the duration of the Brownfield Plan, and $374,000 in new taxes generated not being captured under the Brownfield Plan. And for reference, it provided a site plan overview and a proposed redevelopment mandate. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and Sam is here as well.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Mayor?
Only to, that's not a question, it's to say that how much this businessman has done for this city as far as maintaining this property. You know, we've struggled with some gas stations as far as appearance, some of the dollar stores and so on, and Sam has kept that corner until this construction, which I'm sure must be a nightmare for you. That corner was always very pristine, like landscape, it's very attractive, gas station. And I say all this because I think it's, this is a business owner that it's a good investment on the city's behalf.
Would you like him to come forward and introduce himself?
Yes, please, sure.
Hi, my name is Sam Abis. First of all, I'm just, I'm coming late, I got stuck on Southfield Freeway, there's an accident in there. And you know how it is, I mean, we get so nervous about it.
You had a perfect time.
Okay, okay. I'm glad to be here, and again, I'm the one who owns that corner on 13 Mile Southfield Road. This project is really took a lot of my time, a lot of my money, and I would consider that my biggest achievement in my life. I haven't done anything bigger than that. I put all my money in there, I had about like a million and 300,000 dollars. That's what I thought it's going to take, but every time someone would come and say, "Why you don't add this, the building will look better." "Why you don't add that?" "Why you don't..." Like, the last thing I want to do is put the shelter for the bus stop, because that bothers me all the time. All these poor people, they sit in there in the cold weather, and they try to get in just to stay warm or in the summertime. Also, it's too hot, they want to get in, and I had a little, a mini straw back then, and I can't ask them to leave, and when they stay, I mean, it's a problem to me. So now I want to build that shelter for the bus stop from my own pocket. Also, if you know, I already donated that little piece of my property for the county, and I believe this is for the future enlargement for the Southfield Road. They took that property for $1, and I've been in that location since 1994. Believe me, I'm very proud to be there, I love that corner, I love that city here. It's so good to be in Southfield City, and I'm very proud of what I'm doing there. I spend a lot of time outside sweeping, cleaning pickup cans and pickup garbage or whatever. I am very, very clean, and I am very picky about being clean. Also, I'm picky about customer service, and I get a lot of compliments from people all over. I get a lot of customer that they come in and they like the flowers in summertime, they like the decoration in the holidays and Christmas and New Year and all that. That costs me money, but it makes me really feel good, and it makes customers feel safe and feel good about getting in there and doing business with me. Your help through the Brownfield is very, very appreciated because I went over my budget by more than $1 million. This project is going to cost about $2 million, a little bit more than $2 million, but I took a loan on my house, and I got two loans from two banks in California. I couldn't get one in here because our industry is on a blacklist, so they, the banks, they don't loan gas station. So I did everything I can just to make it happen, and I can't wait till I see that building up. And it's not going to just be a building for the gas station, it's going to be a gas station and a Tim Hortons. There's going to be like at least between 20 to 24 locally employed people. I'm going to, I'm going to hire only local people. And in the past, I had about seven employees. With this new project, it's going to be at least 24, and I mean 24 full-time. That is, doesn't include me or my son. Just thank you in advance, and wish everything goes well. Thank you very much.
Counsel, did you have a question?
Anyway, the tanks that are out there now, the sorts, what are they, three footers, four footers, they're outside?
You're talking about the tanks?
Yeah. Don't you have, don't you have lined up by 13 Mile Road?
Oh, the concrete pipes.
Yeah, the pipes.
Yeah, with the infrastructure.
My question is, looking at where your pumps are, how is that going to work with your, with your storage of your gasoline underground with the pipes down there? I mean, it seems like it's, the lot isn't that big a hole or that, I'm just wondering, not opposed to this, I just want to know an explanation of how that's going to work.
Well, I wish if my architect or my civil engineer is in here to explain it to you so, but it's been worked in a way that it will be safe and will be buried underground, and nothing is going to be in the way of the elements, and it's been made by the best architect that I can name, Mr. Doshen, also the civil engineer, plus the people that they do in the fuel pump, name, Oscar W. Larson, whatever that, they are the best people in this industry. So they are aware of every square inch of that area and where everything has to go.
This is my curiosity, as I go by there all the time and I see the big pipes sitting there, and just trying to figure out how, and look where your tanks are.
Yeah, well...
Working with the building department and...
No, no, I'm not asking, I'm sure that it's not going to get approved, you know, I'm just trying to get an answer as to how complicated it must be to get that all, in that little area. It's just, I do construction and I see the big pipes, what are they, three foot diameter with pipes?
Well, yeah, you're right, I mean, they bother me too. They're laying in there because it's, it's the winter, and we need them to be worked on and be there. But because the weather is not helping, and I was promised that by March, next month, all these would be underground, so you want to see them. And they really bother me too, I don't like to see them the way they are. But they are laid down there not because they belong there, no, they belong in different areas of the, of the property. It's just been there because whoever brought them in dropped from that area.
I'm not opposed to your request, I just like, for myself, the information, it's kind of hard even to get in there with all the pipes.
Oh, not open yet.
Yeah, I know that, it's upside down. I know that, it's upside down. What kind of tanks do you have in the ground? Are those fiberglass tanks?
Yeah, double fiberglass, yes.
With monitoring devices, so they're double fine fiberglass with monitoring. And I think that's your point. There's an awful lot happening in the underground between stormwater, the monitoring devices. And this isn't just two electrical cords. And I've had conversations about the shell, how complicated the wiring is to those monitoring. It's a SCADA-type system, far more sophisticated than what they were putting in twenty years ago.
PM Environmental has done an outstanding job of making sure that everything is the way it's supposed to be.
I just wanna wish you a lot of luck, I just, I just, guy, it's true, not me.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
You only have a question? Yeah, and I just had one other. Within the Brownfield plan, he donated the right away. We were only paying for items, outside the infrastructure-related items on the public side. In other words, under the statute, he would be eligible for some of the cleanup on the tank and that. But because he's owned the station so long, we've cut that off. But the increment being captured is primarily for public infrastructure-related items.
Just a curiosity too, that I do agree with the things everybody says, you've done a great job.
Thank you.
Will you own the Tim Hortons too, or would you rent that?
I would own the space, but not the business, not the franchise.
Oh, okay. Just a good question.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Okay, same one more question, this is Alvin. Thank you for your compassion and your civic madness. And I can hear your voice, how much you care about Southfield. So was that, no other questions, would you go down to second?
And then with the public hearing on the twenty-sixth at seven thirty. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
We need a consensus for this.
It's item A on the consent agenda?
Just a separate.
Yeah, I'll check, take care of that. Just wanted to hand my family here. How are you doing? It's good to see you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Clerk, and members of the community audience. My name is Michael Manning, Community Relations Director for the city. It's my pleasure this evening to present some proposed ideas for the celebration of the city's sixtieth anniversary, which will be upcoming on April twenty-eighth of this year. We have a pre-presentation we prepared, want to go through with you. As I mentioned, Southfield was originally incorporated as a municipality on April twenty-eighth back in nineteen fifty-eight. On April twentieth of this year, we will be celebrating our sixtieth anniversary as an incorporated municipality. We had a meeting several weeks ago with key representatives from various city departments and administration to start discussing plans. And we're here this evening to share those with you and see council's input on those plans. So we had identified a number of key goals that we wanted to address with the celebration of the sixtieth anniversary. Chief among them was to host a signature community event. As many of you recall back to our fiftieth anniversary, we actually had a number of events moving forward throughout the year and a number of other activities associated with that. This not being as a significant milestone, we thought it's very important to commemorate this occasion. But we didn't wanna spend the expenditures that were put out for the fiftieth. So we wanted to put something nice together in a year of activities while also keeping in mind a cost-effective approach to this. So, of course, community outreach and education is a key component of that as well. Including the information dissemination to the community. And then I think perhaps most importantly, to foster a sense of community goodwill and to establish further upon the Southfield Spirit Program. Which if everyone's not familiar, really started with the SFLD letters that's out on the front lawn of City Hall. Those, you can take the L out of that, it'd be part of the Southfield, which we came up with the hashtag Southfield Spirit, which is a social media campaign to get everyone excited about living, working, playing, and studying in the city, Southfield. So one of the proposed signature events that we have for you is the sixtieth anniversary community celebration. As I mentioned, for our fiftieth anniversary, we had a number of events throughout the year. Business reception, two different black tie, black tie optional fire and ice celebration, if anyone may recall. And then, of course, the key signature event was the community celebration back at that time. So we're proposing to do something similar. The date we chose, that we've landed on, again, for your consideration, is Sunday, April twenty-ninth. And the reason being, of course, this year, it would be the April twentieth, the actual date of incorporation is Saturday. However, we thought Sunday would make more sense, that way we could be inclusive with our Orthodox community and not that, to, you know, make it open to the entire community. We're proposing that from two to six P M. in the Southfield Pavilion, the sports arena, and then City Hall front lawn as well. This is something we envision as a free event for the community, largely all activities associated with it would be free of cost. That would be put forth by the city. There would be some things that are proposed that may be a small cost associated with it that we'll get to later in the presentation. But by and large, we envision a free community event to celebrate this special milestone. That would include such things as an open house at City Hall, live entertainment and strolling performers, children's activities, of course, something for the whole family really. And then obviously, a giant community celebration cake to commemorate the sixtieth anniversary. So one of the key events that we're looking at for the community celebration is something that council and Council Mandeville in particular has proposed. And we thought, what a great opportunity to bring this together to celebrate the sixtieth anniversary while also accomplishing one of council's goals, to have a passport to Southfield or Southfield One O Road, One O One program. Similar to what we did for our fiftieth anniversary, we had something similar where the pavilion had representatives from various city departments in the pavilion. And then residents were able to go through and get one of these Southfield passports. And in this passport, it's got a lot of key city information. We envisioned something similar to that. And then perhaps most importantly to those on the occasion, go through and get stamps from the various departments they visit, which in turn would get them a free, back for the fiftieth, they had a choice of a free hot dog lunch or a commemorative keepsake. So we could look at either option for the sixtieth. But something that kind of encourages them to go around and make the rounds where they're getting the information from the city, from key departments and the other community stakeholders, from the MLK Task Force, to the census group that's coming up. And then also is a kind of a fun way to learn more about the city and to get this passport and then they could get a commemorative keepsake or food. As I mentioned, every resident that gets those stamps, whether it be five or more, would then be entitled to get some kind of commemorative keepsake or food. We're thinking some additional activities on the front lawn of City Hall to have a lot of fanfare out there as well. One of the things we did in recent years was have a professional kite flying group out there on the front lawn that seemed to get a lot of excitement from the community. And in researching this, we actually found a company that sells little miniature kite kits that they would be willing to, at no additional cost, put together for the kids, families, anyone really, they wanna do that, and then teach them how to fly them as well. It was a relatively low-cost item that we think could be a lot of fun for the whole family. Of course, food trucks, those are still quite in vogue and a great way to support the local food truck community. This, of course, would be one of the items that would be per individual that would be responsible for whatever they would want to purchase there. We thought we could have free ice skating in the sports arena. And then, of course, the live entertainment and strolling performers. Through the years at various city events, many of you recall, we've had such things as stilwalkers and mimes and clowns. It adds kind of an excitement to the event and the energy in the air. It's kind of a neat thing for, you know, children, young and old to take part in. And in addition to that, we could also have the inflatables, the obstacle course, and a lot of that from Parks and Recreation. In addition perhaps to a petting farm, arts and crafts tables, and some other things that would engage the whole family there. And a lot of these, again, are very low-cost activities that we could put together. Some additional thoughts, of course, we're involved by the fire department with the Fire Safety House to educate the community about the importance of evacuating houses that may catch fire while having, giving it a fun play. And then tours of the fire trucks, police department demonstrations and vehicle displays as well. And then back to the U S Census, as you all know, the twenty-twenty census is coming up and we'll be embarking on some meetings with the Census Bureau shortly. In fact, some of those are being scheduled this week, I believe. And so they've already expressed an interest to be involved with the community to make sure everyone is counted. That's very important for Southfield. So this would be another exciting opportunity or a great opportunity for us to have them involved and get that process going. And then, of course, sixtieth anniversary banners. And I said, commercial advertising, something we could consider. I'm sure many of you have seen, some of our neighboring communities are now doing a lot of commercial advertising. A number of communities from Roseville doing billboards. City of Warren has extensively been running commercial campaigns. Now, mind you, those are quite expensive to do, but it might make sense to at least get costs and look at something like that in commemoration of the sixtieth while touting to the rest of Metro Detroit beyond all the great things about Southfield, whether to choose to live here or start a business here, so on. And then in addition to that, to advertise any of the events that we've put together, particularly the community celebration. And then another interesting thing, many of you recall, we had for the fiftieth anniversary, local artist Curtis Lewis put together a really neat Southfield coloring book. And this was actually very well received by the community. And in this day now that adult coloring books are popular as well, we thought this would be anything that we could do for, you know, young and old alike to take part in, to commemorate. Pardon me?
Non-readers.
Yes, yeah. So another interesting thing, it's relatively low cost that we could consider, so we just wanted to throw that to you as well. So we've been working on developing a custom anniversary logo and associated banners to go with that. These could be displayed along Evergreen Road throughout the municipal complex. And then as well, inside City Hall, we could have one large banner over the catwalk there. Here's the proposed logo. And you'll notice this is actually an update of the fiftieth logo, and there's several reasons for that. It's continuity and branding. So it's consistent and it's building on that continuity. And then this is also ready to go, as opposed to having to go through bedding various graphic designers and multiple iterations, and then you ultimately end up with a hybrid thereof. So this is something we thought would be a very positive way to promote the sixtieth anniversary and something that many will recognize. It's got a different color scheme and verbiage, of course, but, and then a accompanying banner as well. And the thought is, these would be up and down Evergreen Road as well as throughout the municipal complex in addition to other locations throughout the city. Which, again, is great promotion not only for the city's sixtieth, but for the city as a whole. As I mentioned, the coloring book, here's a mock-up of the sixtieth. This is, again, just a work in progress, of course, but this gives you an idea of what that might look like. And we also wanted this celebration to continue throughout the year. As you know, we have many other existing events that we also would tie in the sixtieth celebration to. So among those, of course, is Southwood Flower Day. As many of you recall, we used to have it on the front lawn of City Hall. However, the vendors have indicated that it makes a lot more sense for them to have it at their locations. So last year, in partnership with the mayor's office, we had the first annual Southwood Flower Day at the locations on Nine Mile, and it was very well received. So we thought we would continue that again on May nineteenth. In addition to the Summer Solstice Run, which is looking to return to Southfield on June twenty-third, Family Fun and Safety Night, June twenty-seventh, the Kenny Horn Jazz Fest that's proposed for August tenth and eleventh, the E to the Beat Lunchtime Concert Series, the Burb Gazebo Concerts, Senior Appreciation Night, and then the LTU Homecoming Night. And there's some additional activities as well that Parks and Rec is working on that we would tie in as well. I know Terry Fields is with us and has some other plans that Parks and Rec could further tie into our sixtieth plans throughout the year. And then, of course, the budget. And just bear in mind, please, this is very much a work in progress and these are all proposed activities and proposed numbers and very approximate figures here. But again, for kind of a composite of some of the things outlined, you'd be looking at approximately four thousand for entertainment. Whether we do the food or the keepsake, could be done for under two thousand. And by keepsake, we're talking about a promotional item, whether it be coffee mug or keychain or anything along those lines. There's a whole manner of things available that we would brand with the city's sixtieth anniversary information. That's my recommendation to go, because then it's a commemorative keepsake as opposed to a hot dog eat and it's gone. I think that would make more sense and more make for our budget, but of course, at your discretion. The banners that I indicated, the coloring book, advertising. And this advertising figure only represents doing advertising for the community celebration. And then some miscellaneous, and that would bring us to a total of fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty. Now, again, this is a very much an approximate number. We could make this, you know, we could take it way down depending on what you're looking for. Or obviously, the more you look to add, of course, it increases the figures. And at this point, I'll take any questions anyone may have.
Ms. Morris?
The entertainment for council, does that include the entertainment for the children with the walking?
Yes.
And the Kenny Horn?
No, no, it does not. This budget, I'll go back to it if I may, is largely activities only for the community celebration that we're proposing for Sunday, April twenty-ninth. So when we say entertainment there, that's strictly for activities on that day. And that would include a hodgepodge of things. That's including the petting farm, a number of different performing strolling performers, including face painting, clowns, stilwalker was very popular in years past. And then the petting farm, I believe I mentioned already. And so that would be strictly activities for the twenty-ninth, that figure there.
So that day is really great, you know, with the things that you have for the children and the family. But is there something else we can do for the seniors?
Certainly, yeah, I mean, absolutely, you know, and that's, you know, from our fiftieth, we had two years in the planning process with this being such a significant milestone. One of the things we did do, and it was discussed at our initial meeting, and again, was quite well received, was a senior king and queen birthday. And my thought was to kind of amend this, less so this, and more of a senior prom. Which we've heard a lot of folks that didn't have the opportunity to attend their prom would welcome that opportunity, or just, you know, looking back, it had such fun at theirs. But we had a great success with that for our fiftieth, it was very well attended. So we could do something specific there. And then in addition to that, for the senior appreciation, we thought that tying as well would make sense.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Focassi.
Yeah, Michael.
Yes, sir.
Could we have some kind of magazine? It doesn't have to be a thick one, but something that, that talks about where we were and where we're headed at sixty years old.
That's a great idea.
The reason I say that is because, you know, we're really looking at marketing the city. You get sponsorships from the businesses to do that. And, I mean, it's very important, we're getting, as far as I'm concerned, covered by the amount of attention other cities are getting. In fact, the last cranes that we got, Cranes List of whatever, you know, you've got Troy on there, you've got other cities, and here we are, Southfield, and we're not even on that crane front page, you know, that cover.
Okay.
And I think when I look at what they showed, Holly, Michigan, and those things, in comparison, you know, we are the business center. And I think they don't, we don't, we don't go out and really tell enough people what we are. And I think that we're, they don't do something pretty quick. You just keep reading each and every time you open either a magazine or newspaper. You know, there's so many more square feet of office space in Detroit and so much this, and then you got David, David O'Ste, I guess it is, doing a sixteen mile round thing, sitting under your office and looking down the midway and, you know, showing on television all the time. I mean, I just, I just think that we really gotta get into the game to let people know we're still alive and well.
Well, certainly. And, you know, we do send out press releases on anything that's even remotely newsworthy. As you're probably aware, we've got extensive positive coverage, most recently across all media outlets when we were in the running for the Amazon HQ two. So much so that I think Gilbert and Nugin were a little peeved that City of Southfield was getting more coverage than they were at a point relative to HQ two.
I'm literally, I didn't see anything about Southfield.
We've got a pack, I'll make sure that you get it, Councilman Focassi. Certainly.
And I said, I've never seen it like you're doing. Fred has told us that we're going for it, but I've just never seen the product they're putting out or advertising or anything about it.
I'll make sure you get that, absolutely.
And, you know, I just was talking to CINCOG and, you know, they better start looking at, at this first-tier communities when they talk about Detroit. Because, you know, right now, they're getting all the money, you know, and the region is suffering. And I think we've gotta get a toe in the water so as we can get, get as much coverage as they are.
Absolutely, yeah.
You know, I mean, we have big things, we only have thirty-two million dollar... I mean, we have big things, we only have $32 million, nobody going up with Auto Live, and you see a little spot and that's it, you know? Thank goodness, when you feel good, when Brooks was talking about City of the County, he only mentioned Southfield and Anson Denso, and he mentioned Auto Live, and he mentioned Carmel, and all these things in his speech, and showed pictures of it. And, you know, that's what we have to do more, and I really felt good that there were a lot of people there, going to show a movie theater, and a lot of people up in, wanting to say, "Southfield is our home."
Right. I certainly hear what you're saying, and we continue to strive to get more media coverage, positive media coverage. Interestingly, Elbrose Patterson did just mention Southfield yesterday, unquestionably, relatively. But that's, again, where the 60th represents another opportunity for us to do that. You know, it's a great opportunity, celebrating such a significant milestone, that we can, again, put out a number of press releases relative to the different events and activities taking place. But in addition to that, as I mentioned earlier, it's an opportunity just to consider perhaps looking at some of that commercial advertising other communities are doing. So it gives us yet another tool to work with. Of course, we have to have something there to tout, and I think this would be another example where we could do that.
You see, a lot of the old newspapers that we had for the anniversaries, each page was a corporation talking about it.
Absolutely, yeah, and we raised over $51,000.
That's if you want to see them.
Right, yeah, yeah, I think it's a great example and a great suggestion, Councilman, to do kind of a then and now, and then we could seek sponsorships in that, commercial advertising, that type of thing. You know, for the 50th, we actually spent a significant amount, far more than we're proposing here, and we raised $51,000 to offset that. So that was quite significant. But I think that's a great suggestion, something we could certainly look at, and I hazard a guess would be successful. I'm sure people would want to be a part of that, so.
Okay, Michael, any other questions?
Mr. Cruz. I was wondering if there was maybe an appetite to have maybe another function, maybe that Friday to kick off a black tie type affair or something of that nature. That'd be kind of nice to lead it, since we won't be here on Saturday, but, you know, and that could also be something that we, you know, look for sponsorship or some of that to put together, but I think it'd be real nice to have something a little more formal like that, and still have people on Sunday as well, that's more property-based in terms of the community, but I'd like to see if we could lead that as well.
Okay. Great, another great suggestion, Councilman Cruz. In fact, maybe perhaps just spitballing here, something we could tie in with the Kenny Horn Jazz Fest that's proposed, perhaps having like a special night with Kenny kind of thing. Again, just throwing that out, but I think it's a great suggestion, something we could certainly look at.
60th anniversary is a diamond anniversary usually.
I agree, sir.
So, you know, with the logo, I understand, you know, keeping it the same, but maybe incorporating like some type of diamond shape inside the logo. Just to add a little bit to it, I think, just looking at the logo, I think we could figure something out, but...
Absolutely.
You know, even with the banners, you know, you can put stuff up in the parks and some of the baseball fields and the fence in the outfield.
Great suggestion.
Yeah, just to get it more throughout the city, rather than just around City Hall, you have to go into Ingleburg and other parks. I think it's a good flash throughout city properties.
I agree, and that's a great suggestion, Councilman Manamal. I think that, you know, typically, we're up and down the Evergreen corridor, which is significant, I think important to be there. But, you know, one of the things that we had suggested was to put them throughout the city, so I think at parks would make a lot of sense, but to spread them a little further than typically you have our main city center.
Okay.
With businesses to also display the name.
Certainly.
Because they would gladly do that.
Absolutely, yep, definitely. In fact, we did for the 50th, a neat thing that we did, Councilman Taylor, that may make sense, we had decals that we did that were quite well received back then. And a lot of businesses were advertising these in their windows, just celebrating the, you know, commemoration with the city being part of the city. And then, in addition to that, a lot of those folks that were willing to display that in their window, but then have information out, so we'd have our postcards and flyers and our other promotional items. So that's a great suggestion, something I think most businesses would be open to. Certainly.
And just impossible, we're not trying to run up the budget, but just say, "I was looking at that kind of lapel pin."
Sure.
You know, that's something I just probably want to give away.
Absolutely, and that's kind of along the lines what I was envisioning too for the commemorative keepsake, something like that, like a nice lapel pin that, you know, men or women could wear, that commemorates, you know, the 60th anniversary, but from Southfield. Great suggestion.
Mr. Mars.
Yeah, you mentioned that it was a luncheon year next year, and you were going to be providing information about the census, but I was wondering if we could work the city clerk to also maybe do voter registration or something.
Absolutely, I would envision at the city clerk table in the Southfield 101 or Passport to Southfield, that that would be something we'd have.
Are you ready? Okay, okay.
It's a great suggestion. I mean, these are the types of things, Councilwoman, that I was envisioning at our Passport to Southfield or the Southfield 101, is precisely that type of stuff. Good things that people, like Councilman Manamal would always make reference to the police during the home security checks. A lot of residents may not know that, and it's the type of information we want to put out to the community at this event, that's good services that we offer, but everyone may not be aware of them to take advantage of them. So certainly voter registration and these types of things are what we're looking to disseminate at that event.
Okay.
Of course, in a fun way, though, you know.
And Michael, this is why, I think this is the last item for this session, because I wanted this brain shown and that everybody get involved with no time when this is the session, but recall, there are a few more dollars out there that we suggested, and perhaps, I know we ought to be a few more in, if we possibly can, but there are a few more dollars out there there. Once you get into the planning, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Just today, I heard from Parks and Rec director, who has volunteered to chip in for this, within the Parks and Rec budget. And I have unspent community development money to help underwrite some of these things as well, so.
And that was out...
We won't be going through it by having a little target.
Okay. That's what I was looking to, there are avenues, and obviously, we got some good suggestions from the table, and the reason is here, and look forward to all your progress.
Great.
One, what's the other?
Mr. President, we, the administration is going to need clerk consensus on these events. We presented these, and I heard a lot of ideas, so you're going to want us to bring this back, go through and just finish refining this?
Yeah, okay, yeah. And obviously, if we find it, just lock it down, and then we...
Right.
Can we put a cost?
And the cost associated with it.
Public safety was admitted from...
If I may, just, I would only caution, the first time's of the essence, so we want to, you know, kind of nail some of this down as soon as possible, so we can start moving forward, and staff can start making those arrangements, putting, you know, as we started putting our kind of tentative budget together, unfortunately, a lot of the folks we approached already had commitments. So I only presented to you things we can do that are on the table right now, that the petting farm, for example, the Wind Jammers kite, professional kite team, these types of things, we already reached out to them, got costs from them, and cleared the date. So what you're seeing here is only proposals that we know we can make work. As time goes on and more time elapses, we may find ourselves in a situation where the kite crew's gone, or this or that. So I mean, I would just only caution that we need to move forward.
And I agree with Mr. Zorn in what respect to getting approved on everything, and if a date certain, we know April is coming around real quick, and so, and as soon as we can have a solid plan, we can, yes or no, I want to tweak that, but I do realize time is of the essence.
Mr. Mayor.
I think what Michael needs tonight, because it'll take time to get banners and other things, is to go ahead with this logo that he's proposed. I think that's really essential. So if everybody's agreeable to that, so he can move on.
Right, time is of the essence.
I'll pass out just some more of this information in detail that maybe give you more food for thought there. And it's largely what I've outlined there.
I was trying to give you a decision, you know, with respect to go out and start, you know, lock down some contracts.
Okay.
But is there one being agreed with this logo?
I thought he wanted to say a diamond or something.
Let me just say, how many?
I'm in agreement with it, if he drops a little diamond in there, that was Michael's suggestion.
I mean, and by way of example, we could put something here, you know, that says like diamond jubilee or what it's called, but, you know, we could certainly incorporate that, perhaps in the O of the 60th, in a very tasteful way, of course, you know, look at it where it makes the best, most sense replacement. Yeah, right here, perhaps? Yeah, I mean, you've got, you've got space here, you've got space here.
You know, so, you know, again, just, I was thinking, if you took that inside, Brian, made that look like the diamond, you started a circle on that side.
Another great idea, we could, we could do that. We'll certainly tinker with the best options and come up with a solution there.
Circle. Say that again.
So you want the brown circle on the inside, instead of having the circle, made that the diamond.
Yeah. All right, I heard even the O, I think, the city clerk...
No, 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 I'm talking about just what my...
Oh, the O inside?
I already see it, yeah.
Okay, right, yeah, because we could, we could certainly do that. What City Clerk Caucus was recommending, or even taking the O right now.
Whatever you can come up with, that incorporated what we talked about, it's sort of the diamond in that, and the most efficient time frame, that would work for us.
Okay.
And is there any other, Mr. Mayor, you've highlighted that one item, that's for to get them some running, when you get some things done. Is there anything else? Do you think you need a filing sheet or anything today, other than that?
Well, it takes some time to get that done, so that, that's why, one of the reasons why I was pushing the logo approval, so that it can go on the coloring book. And also, it'll take time. Curtis Lewis, somebody you know, Curtis, who's a muralist and did, he was who we were thinking of going with, I want to put a coloring book, and, you know, Curtis has been around a long time, he's done a very nice job, so. But we need to give him direction, get this thing finished, it's history, and, you know...
Okay, Mr. Zorn, I think a minute ago, he brought the fact that we will get with Michael, and Mike, they will get together and put something together for final approval.
Sure.
Okay.
Just if I can, I don't know how, if this will work with Michael's timeframe, but we do have a meeting coming up on Thursday, we couldn't have a small...
No, you can't.
No?
No.
Oh, because it's strictly...
No, you can't do it.
I could circulate via email to the group, or, you know, we could look at other solutions that would keep us moving along, if that's agreeable.
All right, Ms. Taylor.
Yeah, I just have one question, you keep saying, "We," so who makes up the team? Because I was asking.
Sure, we had, as I mentioned, a committee meeting several weeks ago, and we had key representatives from Parks and Recreation, Business Development, of course, Community Relations, Administration, who am I missing here? I mean, it was kind of a cross-section of most city departments.
So the team was about seven, eight people?
Probably more over 10 or so, it was, yeah, but it was pretty much a cross-representative of each city department.
Mr. Cruz, I was wondering if it was, so is this right now, or we're proposing this coming all out of your budget, or right now?
Various funding streams. So, for example, I have a meeting tomorrow, I'm giving a similar presentation at the City Center Advisory Board meeting, and we're asking them for funding. So we're looking to get maybe, you know, 1,500, a few thousand dollars from that group. I'll be giving this presentation to them tomorrow morning, so... Right.
But that's coming from a license.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mannion has a ballpark figure of $25,000. That's what we gave him the other day.
And as we outlined, we can do this for far less.
Yeah, no, that's, what you gave today is bare-bones.
Right.
And we have a couple of dollars coming from a couple places. Total's $25,000, but he's working with that. But he realizes, and the administration will, he can go to $25,000 right now. Okay.
Wikipedia, diamond jubilee is a celebration held to mark the 60th anniversary of an event related to a person, for example, a session to a throne, wedding, et cetera. In the case of an event not relating to a person, for example, the founding of an organization, a diamond jubilee is observed at the 75th anniversary.
Oh, there you go. Scratch the diamond. So is this, is this good as a statement?
Okay, yeah, I think we made a monumental progress here, this logo.
Things are moving along nicely already.
We're moving on right along, and keep up the good work, and your Mr. Zorn, however you want to deal with it, lock us down, so to your timeline, to make sure we meet the April timeline, without people pulling their hair out.
Okay, much appreciated. And through the chair, so we do have a consensus on this, then? We can move forward with the logo and banner design?
All in favor?
Is this just a consensus, not a formal vote?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, and if I may, just if we have a feeling on the community celebration for April 29th, does that, does that work? Terry Fields already checked the pavilion, and Parks and Rec's on board fully. So if we could move forward with that as well, for the planning of it, and then, of course, we'll flush out the details and get this back to Council.
All right, very good.
Thank you very much.
We will suspend this for a few minutes until 7:30.
Do you, we have a few minutes, we could pass out the agenda for Thursday night for council?
Okay.
And I've got the proposed agreement that, that way you can have a chance to look at it in the next couple nights before the actual hearing on Thursday. Well, so that we have a chance to look at it before, before Thursday, this is what we talked about last Monday, the proposed agreement that our senator is willing to make to the city. And one issue came up with respect to the music, you know, is it, because the provision that we had in there was kind of where the chief was feeling pretty strong that in some real sense, in his opinion, it's the type of music that is attracting a certain younger crowd, that maybe is not the best crowd to have in terms of that establishment. So we did include, well, again, remember, this is something that was offered by Bar Seven. So he offered to go, you know, away from the rap and hip-hop, and to go more towards jazz and a different mix of music toward a more mature crowd. But I've heard a couple of comments, Ms. Taylor also, she and I talked, is this, would this be considered discriminatory in any type of interpretation? And the chief and I, I think, we talked about it again. I think we both feel that really what it's targeting, because, I mean, Caucasian young people like rap and hip-hop music too, at least from what I see, in terms of my nieces and nephews and so forth. So, you know, we still feel that it's directed at an age group, as opposed to any other type of ethnicity. And again, we bantered around, the chief and I, well, could we just put language in there about not, you know, directed more to this mature crowd? But I think he and I are a little uncomfortable with that, because that leaves it to interpretation, what does that mean? So I'm happy to still hear comments, but I think at this point, the chief still feels pretty strongly that he wants, and again, remember, this is coming from the bar. They're saying, "We're not going to play any more of that music." So it's not us imposing this on him, this is what he's saying, he is, he is not going to have a certain kind of music, so.
Yeah. I guess, I guess I was objecting to even have a hearing on it.
I understand.
And I still believe that, that the chief has more power to make them adhere to rules than getting the whole thing stirred up and having anything for them to sign, that they agree to. If they have an attorney, they're never going to do that. If I was to, you're an attorney, and you know what I'm talking about.
But they have signed it, and the way the public hears...
They have signed it?
They have signed it, the copy that you have is signed. They have signed it, the copy that you have is signed. And the other aspect is that they're, they understand the, the, what the council indicated last week, that the council's not opposed to this agreement, but they wanted to have an opportunity for people, especially people in the area, residents, to come in and say, this is what the operations of this establishment have done to my quality of life.
But you saw it in the cheerful and public hearing of what council people say.
Well, my understanding was that we're going to provide this public hearing and people could come, and I, and I will have to say this, the bar intends, they got a number of people that love that establishment, love going for a burger and a beer, and they intend to come in and tell council what a wonderful place it is, and please don't do anything to the ability of this, of this establishment to operate. So, we'll hear all that. It's my understanding council intends to pursue this agreement, that as long as they, as long as the bar operates under these restrictions, they're okay. If something changes that night, my recommendation is we need to adjourn the public hearing after everyone's spoken from the, from the public, and then we need to have the hearing that the ordinance contemplates, which is, we present our case, they present their case, and we go through the, the full due process hearing that the ordinance requires before we were, we would make any kind of recommendation to the LCC. So, I think that's, that's almost the way, because what I'm understanding, the attorney is not going to even appear on Thursday, because all you are asking is that his client come and listen to what the public has to say. So, that's what's going to happen, and again, if council feels any differently after that, that's fine, but then we'll have to, we're still going to have to have that hearing where we, we allow the due process that is expressly, you know, within our ordinance to occur.
When I look at a hearing, just listening to the, the, the people who are wanting to speak for or against it.
Yes.
I just, I just would, I mean, I just spin through it all, and I, anytime that something is documented with minutes or anything else, you know, you, you're in trouble. In, in other words, what I'm saying is, it's a state license.
Yes.
And, and, and there's procedures that you follow when you have a, a ticket that is written up by the police department and a hearing before the, the board itself. And so, if you, if, if you by any chance say things that would be brought up before the liquor board, one way or the other, that I would just put in a position that, that the city, whatever you have.
I understand.
I mean, you know.
I guess I would hope that after you listen to the public, that if you have any change of mind and you, you feel you want to go in a different direction or you want to say some, I think then that ideally we just adjourn the public hearing, and, and then we set the public hearing and go through the whole process that the ordinance envisions. I, I don't think we should, again, my understanding was from what we decided last week, was we, that council was satisfied with this. So, I, I, I think that's, I mean, this is.
But Dan, I don't even rush you there, but this is very serious.
I know.
You could, you could get yourself the, the whole lot of.
Well, it is important this way also, that we cannot, every, everything, the law, both the state law and in our own ordinance, says that we have to do what we're going to do under due process, which means you haven't made up your mind before you go through the hearing. So, I would hope that we don't make a lot of comments at the public hearing that indicate, you know, one way or the other, and, and I understand that. I, I, again, I hope we're just going to listen to whoever wants to come, because this is kind of a modified hearing.
Yeah.
Based on what, what we discussed last week.
This is a public hearing.
It is.
From the city itself.
Yes, yes.
But what's coming up Thursday, is what we agreed to last week, this is what's coming up Thursday, and which will be here from both sides, the pluses and the minuses, and council will not necessarily make any moves that particular night for or against, but if we decide that we want to go against what's here, we will have the council that meeting.
Well, just adjourn it, because we, right.
Adjourn that, that public hearing.
And I said it for another day.
Well, this is what we talked about the night we agreed to last week, I did A, B, C on the wall. Mr. Mayor?
Just, I sent Sue an email earlier today, I went from two people, one of them is an attorney, who's not threatening, I think she's a resident, and just said that she thought it was discriminatory to say about rap and hip-hop. And I responded that this was the bar owner's.
Correct. Decision on what type of music he'll play.
So, just, and somebody, someone else wrote, I guess, I also want to know, I have a very definite opinion about this, I want to know when I can speak to this.
You what?
Well, since you're not the council.
I didn't hear what you said.
I'm asking when I may speak to this. I, I don't vote on this.
Right.
But I have a very definite opinion.
Yeah, I, I'm.
This is a public hearing, so you're a resident of the city, so you can speak during the.
As a resident, public hearing.
I, I just want to know what protocol you, what.
Well, because this is such a modified hearing, I mean, this is not what the ordinance envisioned, it's kind of a hybrid that we've created, so that we can hear from the residents. So, absolutely, I mean, you have a right to speak, because you don't, you're not a voting member of council on this issue, so.
I guess one other, let's open up the floor.
Sure.
The mayor would get in queue, I mean, get in queue to.
I, I just want to know when is the appropriate time.
Yeah, I just wanted to say again, I didn't, I don't care for the rap and hip-hop singling out the music, and you see, either, I understand they put this together, but I think, you know, I'd say mature audience, I bet it doesn't be a lot of interpretation, but at least it is something to kind of work with, but I think, we can, we can talk to the chief on it, I think that's about the type of music all the time, and somewhat just the volume of the music.
And I was going to.
I said the same thing you said. What about how loud it is?
But I think, what the chief has always said to me, and I, I'm a chief's aide, but what he always said to me, it's just the lyrics and so forth. Some of the lyrics are, are very violent and abusive to women, and, and he feels a lot of it is the lyrics and the music.
Okay, so, in the same thing, then, there are clean versions of rap and hip-hop that don't have that in there.
Absolutely.
You know, we could, we could put that in there then, so that we could still.
The other thing I thought is that we've talked about, you know, maybe what type of music he would intend to play, like maybe jazz, we know he's been doing Motown, so that's, that crosses all, you know, all races and ethnicities, potentially, you know, like easy listening or something like that. So, I, I mean, if we're more focused on what we would like to see than the opposite.
Yes, so, I mean, to your point, though, it's, it's classic hip-hop, that you're not seeing bar fights on, it's, it's trap rap that you may see.
Oh, gosh, I don't even know what that is.
Different fights on, so I do think that it's, it's kind of trap rap.
Yes.
So, it's different genres of rap and hip-hop that may, you know, I, I don't think bar fights are breaking off of current flow and classic hip-hop as well.
I don't know. I guess I, I could try to talk to the chief one more time, and let's see if there's some different way we could go.
If the bar puts that together, and they.
Well, they put what they would agree to in the conditions, yeah, yeah.
This does not, where would we come down with, this does not prove the police were not enforcing laws on the people.
Absolutely.
If we get a Noah's complaint.
Absolutely.
We can go and enforce it.
Sure.
If they get a, some out of fighting, if they get going, and so, but this is just something that we're trying to make a bad situation good and livable for both citizens and, and the, and the private, and this is what we agreed to last week, to allow the individuals who are vocal plus and a minus on this situation to, to have that day, because us not necessarily rule on anything that night.
Well, I guess that is a question, if you, after you've listened, everybody, if you wanted to, to approve this, would you do it that night?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so there potentially could be action that night, right?
Truth and language on camera, working on chronic with some type of continuous recording that is a value.
Chief did not stipulate that, but.
I mean, I just.
Right.
He just has a camera, and I think of some type of electronic surveillance that's got a, a light that continues to look.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk to him on that, I'll talk to him on that.
It's not like you see at Costco, it just has a camera.
Okay. All right, is that, is that clear? There's these, there's these clear?
Six thirty?
Okay. Mr. President, just to go again, I have last night's session, I'll try to get here when we're done, if this is still going on, otherwise I won't be present. Okay, bud, I hope you can drag in there. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, is there anything else? We're in recess. We're chilling. We get into the chamber.
We have no curations, we have appointments, and reappointment to the Southfield Public Art Commission. Is that you, Mr. Mayor? Reappointment, appointment to the Public Art Commission?
Momentarily distracted, sorry.
You hear us?
I'm here now.
All right, we can get started.
I have appointment and a reappointment to the Public Art Commission. So, I'd like to, Robert McTaggart, I don't believe he's here, I think he's ever found, he would be the reappointment. Robert has served for the last couple of years on the Public Art Commission, and I'd like to introduce the council, Yvonne Malinsky. If you'd like Yvonne to come forward. So, tonight, Yvonne would be filling the vacant, there's a vacancy on the, on the Art Commission. This was one of the extra positions that was added and didn't get filled immediately, so I recommend her appointment. She's been a Southfield resident for decades, thirty years. I, I remember Ms. Malinsky when her children were little and she was a PTA mom at, at their school, that's how they went up, and they're, they're big people now.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the appointment and reappointment to the Southfield Art Commission as outlined by the mayor.
Support.
The movement, Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we appoint the young lady as presented by the mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes.
I would also add that Ms. Malinsky is recently retired from Ford Motor Company, and she worked in graphic arts for the company, designed. Would you like to ask the clerk to come, it's where you're in, make this official?
Is it, because it's a pair of, she finished, you want to have her come?
I sure will.
Okay.
...in the state of Michigan, in the charter of the city, Southfield, according to the rest of my ability, for, is that my screw, for, for Public Art Commission?
First meeting is coming up next Tuesday. Next Tuesday, that's tomorrow. And I would like to present to you this, and the council would like to meet you in February. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. I got three years of campaign, and you're going to pipe, so, more pipe, nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. My pleasure.
Do you have a motion?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion, and we approve the minutes for January twenty-second, two thousand eighteen.
Support.
The movement, Ms. Morris, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we approve the regular meeting minutes of January twenty-two, two thousand eighteen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes. Minutes of January twenty-two, two thousand eighteen, approved and presented. Next item will be our consent agenda, and I would like to remind our audience that we, our consent agenda items are extensive, there are a lot of papers, a lot of words and verbiage, and I will just pretty much give a summary and primarily give the fiscal impact, but I would encourage you to go to the city court's website and look at the council meeting minutes, you know, agenda, and you can see all the detail there, just in case you want additional detail that I'm not presenting. The first item is the Brownfield Development Plan and Tactical and Financial Plan, and the development will be a personal agreement for three zero nine one five, Southfield Road, the gas station redevelopment. This particular Brownfield plan will allow the owner development to develop the southwest corner of Southfield Road and Thirteen Mound. The proposed project encompasses the demolition of the former building for the new construction of a three thousand eight hundred square foot larger seastore. Total investment is approximately one million five hundred thousand to two hundred, to two million dollars. The project will create fourteen full-time jobs and six part-time jobs. Consent agenda item B, the city of Southfield, this deal with the budget of DTE energy improvement grants. The city of Southfield recently took part in the, in two DTE energy improvement grants. The city purchased and installed energy-saving LED eight lights and was reimbursed for a portion of the purchase price. Twenty-eight watt fluorescent bulbs were replaced with seventeen watt LED bulbs. The fiscal impact specifically, the city recently expended nine thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars and thirty-two cents, and we, and we received back nine thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars and eighty cents for a difference of sixty-three dollars. This item was discussed in February twenty, in February five, two thousand eighteen, committee of the whole meeting. It is recommended that the council accept the grant funding from DTE and approve an increase in the facilities maintenance, repair and maintenance account. Consent agenda item C, Southfield Police Department, Police Training Room Conversion. The Police Department has relocated the records division from the second floor to the first floor of the Police Building, to make more, to make it more accessible and convenient for residents, in addition to increasing security of the building. The vacant space on the second floor is now being converted to a training room. The fiscal impact of this move will be, the training room conversion will cost one thousand, I mean, nineteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, and these particular funds will come out of the existing federal forfeiture fund, that in essence is no impact on the Southfield budget, it comes out of the forfeiture fund. That in essence is no impact on the Southfield budget, this comes out of the forfeiture fund that our police department participated in. Consent agenda item D, authorization to replace, replacement, authorization to purchase replacement vehicles for the police department. Council gave authorization within the twenty-seventeen, two thousand eighteen budget to purchase various replacement vehicles as indicated. The fiscal impact, expenditure of three hundred ninety-one thousand and seventy dollars. And funding is provided in the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen multiple weekly replacement account. In total, there will be thirteen vehicles are recommended for replacement. Consent agenda item E, the Clemis, Southfield Police Department Court and Law Enforcement Management Information System Clemis reimbursement. This is a reimbursement for this particular fund. Clemis is a regional law enforcement management information system. The city through the police department has been a member of this consortium since two thousand seven. Clemis provide, police department provides the police department with computer aided dispatch, mobile data computers, law enforcement information network, record management systems, electronic citations, crash reports, prime mapping, as well as information and other systems of course. Clemis also provides residents the ability to purchase crash reports online. The police department has identified several projects for this particular fund, and I just want to highlight a couple of them. The Guardian Tracking is a, is a piece of software program that's being used by many agencies to consolidate their personnel files and improve file management. And another item that will be purchased here will be, the police department is requesting a forensic cell phone extraction software system. And additionally, the animal control officer will benefit from two additional pieces of equipment. The Supertalent Animal Catcher offered a humane way, a humane alternative to using. The, I will start with this, the Supertalent Animal Catcher offered a humane alternative to using deadly force in the capture of fleeing animals. The fiscal impact is, there's, there's a neutral fiscal impact on the city of Southfield. The fund will be dispersed by Clemis upon request by Chief Marlowe. We are requesting a budget adjustment of fifty-five thousand of various police department expenditures announced and a likely increase in police department revenue. And the purchasing department is already out seeking quotes based on this, on the particular items. Consent agenda item F, the authorization to replace the Hirsch Extraction Rescue Tube. This is from the Fire Department, these are the jaws of life. Council gave authorization within, within the fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen budget to purchase and update replacement set of battery operated rescue tubes. Accordingly, we are asking council to approve the purchase, to purchase this rescue equipment through the city, through the city of Rochester Hill by the Mitten Cooperative Purchasing Program. The fiscal impact here is the expenditure total is twenty-eight thousand and funding will be provided in the fiscal two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Fire Department operating supplies. Consent agenda item G, the receipt of bid for a rescue task force personnel protection equipment for the Fire Department. A little narrative here is with recent active assailant incidents occurring throughout the country, victims need urgent care to treat their wounds. Victim need urgent, victim need medical treatment immediately sometime prior to law enforcement completing their quarantine or removal of suspects. The Fire Department indicated that best practices identify that department members will need a level-three ballistic vest, helmet, safety goggles, storage bags, and tactical medical supply bags to accomplish their vital mission. Two sets of, two sets of view will be housed at each Fire Department, Fire Departments number one through five, with additional medical equipment being located with a EMS coordinator and training and safety officer. The purchasing department has received bids on December one, two thousand seventeen for the purchase of the personal protection equipment. And the low bid was Bound Tree Medical of Dublin, Ohio, at one thousand seventeen thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty cents. Fiscal impact funded this purchase is provided in our fiscal year budget twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen station operating supplies. Consent agenda item H, purchase of high-speed voting equipment for absentee ballots. In January twenty seventeen, the Secretary of State Office for the state of Michigan approved new election equipment for the state of Michigan to replace the present outdated equipment throughout the state. On December eighteen, twenty seventeen, the city council approved a resolution authorizing the purchase of a high-speed tabulation, of a high-speed tabulator for approximately sixty-two thousand sixty-five dollars and zero cents. Due to software, due to software enhancements of the high-speed tabulator. Can you hear me? Tabular decided to jump around. On December seventeen, council approved a resolution authorizing the purchase of a high-speed tabulator for approximately six two thousand and sixty-five dollars. Due to software enhancement of the high-speed tabulator, there's an additional cost of five thousand forty-five dollars. Increase in the total purchase price of the high-speed tabulator to seventy-seven thousand one hundred and ten dollars. The fiscal impact decided is the cost of the high-speed tabulator is approximately sixty-seven thousand one hundred and ten dollars. Currently, the clerk office has enough money to allocate in the count, in their accounts to purchase a high-speed tabulator. Consent agenda item I. It's a resolution revoking revoking the commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate number C two zero six dash zero one nine, the problems placed holding LLC. That's sixteen one seventy-six, Cublin Road, Southfield. Consent agenda, consent agenda item J, the resolution revoking commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate number C two zero one six dash zero two zero for Luke Providence Tower, Eric, Luke Providence Tower LLC, sixteen thousand three hundred and nine mile road, Southfield, Michigan. Consent agenda item K, request to submit application for funding for community foundation, funding from the community foundation for Southeast Michigan as a fiduciary for the Martin King Task Force. I'm going to repeat that, we, request to submit application for funding from the community foundation of Southeast Michigan as a fiduciary agent for the Dr. Martin King Task Force. Fiscal impact, the city is proposing to act as a fiduciary agent on behalf of the Dr. Martin King Task Force, there is no fiscal impact. The funds will be dispersed to the city and the city will disperse those funds to the Dr. Martin King as needed and it's approved for the Brownfield Community Foundation. Council, Congress, if you've heard the consent agenda item, what are your closing?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to approve consent agenda items A through K.
Support. Okay, the movement, the movement by Mr. Mandamong, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we approve consent agenda items A through K. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Of all, consent agenda items are approved as presented. We will now go into the communication portion. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Let me roll back over here. As I've, as I've indicated, on numerous times, I have an even speed and sometimes I will just fall right ahead. And I'm reminded that I had to back up in the old slide, that I had to jump over. But we do have a public hearing. Bill of PSLU one seven dash zero zero one two, special use request.
Thank you. For the, for the chair. As stated, we only have one public hearing tonight, it's PSLU seventeen dash zero zero one two, special use request ignore, on behalf of the owner, Advanced LLC, for the construction of a two thousand nine hundred seventy-seven gross square foot freestanding restaurant with drive-through, a property located at two three zero seven seven Greenfield Road, on the northwest corner of Greenfield Road and West Nine Mile. There's also a second part, which is the site plan, we're going to present them all at this time, but you need to vote on them separately. You'll need to vote on them separately. So again, the property at West Nine Mile, Greenfield. The particular site for the proposed drive, freestanding restaurant is up here on the northeast portion of the property. These are existing conditions, currently there's a three-story parking structure. It's currently zone B three, the property being impacted by the rezoning, or excuse me, the special land uses shown here in red. Then there's also the site plan review for construction of a sixty, sixty-eight hundred gross square foot retail center, in addition to the standalone restaurant and demolition of the front portion of the existing parking structure. You can see it faintly here, this dash line represents the existing footprint of the parking structure, so about twenty, twenty-five percent will be removed for the, for the new construction and new circulation around the site. This is the detail, Mr. Fraser at our study session was concerned about circulation. There are nine feet for parallel parking, the minimum twenty foot for one-way traffic, twelve additional feet for a dedicated drive-through lane, and then another thirteen feet for off-hour loading. And one of the conditions of the special use is to have the loading and unloading at off-peak drive-through hours. This is the breakdown of the retail center and the freestanding restaurant. And then I'm going to turn it over to the applicant, Mr. Nager. He's going to talk about some of the proposed improvements for their existing structure. That's not under consideration tonight, but some of the architectural detail plays in hand with the proposed new structure and the refacing of the garage.
Thanks, sir. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. My name is Brian Nager. Address, six hundred North Old Woodwork, Suite one hundred, Birmingham, Michigan. And I'm here to discuss the redevelopment and addition to the advanced building here in Southfield. Some of you are already familiar with this, we've gone through some, some discussion on it already in the study sessions. But we'd like to bring everybody else up to speed, so I'll try to make it brief and open up for questions after. So the, the advanced building, as everybody knows, is an excellent location in the city of Southfield. With the, the new developments going on for Northland, this, this is going to be a much improved plan for the advanced building. We're looking at updating the facade of the advanced building, we're also making some improvements inside. But separately, we are trying to enhance the, the make sure at the advanced building. So the proposal tonight is for the retail center. And that's to create more of a mixed-use type use for the site. And we, you know, territory the retail square footage, approximately ten thousand square feet and, you know, a reduction in the apartment deck over there, so.
Want to scroll through the?
Sure. This would be an example of what we plan to do with the front. And part of the reason behind this is because we're trying to enhance the medical use in the building. Being in close proximity to Providence Hospital, we feel like the need for medical space is there. So we're trying to come out, pick up and drop off the patients and give them a covered area to walk in and out of. This just shows some of the facade improvements, what we're trying to do here is to add this material. The material you see here is called longboard, it's, it's a, it's a wood-looking material, but it's made out of metal. It gives a, it gives a really nice upgraded modern look to a building that, that could definitely use some improvements aesthetically. This shows the, the rendering of the parking structure as if we were standing out in Greenfield looking in. Part of the discussion that we had at the study session was, when you're looking at the shopping center from Greenfield, one of the council members made the comment, when we're looking through between the two buildings, we were, we were looking at a lot of concrete. So what we did was we shifted some of the, some of the longboard material here. We ended up shifting that over to the, this would be south, so that the split between the two buildings is about right here. We took some of that nice material, we shifted it from here to here, so that aesthetically you would be able to see that as you're driving by. Most of the building, most of this parking deck is going to be covered by the shopping center, the shopping center. You probably see the top three to four feet of that. And by doing this, we're going to see the top three to four feet, as well as this, I believe fifteen or twenty-foot break between the shopping centers, so that'll be really nice. There it is again. And this is the shopping center superimposed on that. So as you're looking at the, the complex in Greenfield, this is what you can see. Freestanding building here, three thousand square feet and the multi-tenant center right there. This is a view from the back, the sides, and an example of some of the materials that we're using. This right here is the, the longboard material, so pretty new and very nice, actually.
Public hearing is now open. No, yes, come forward, see the lady back. Please give your name and address.
Thank you for acknowledging, my name is Angel. I live at one eight eight three seven Fillmore Street, Southfield, four eight zero seven five. I was just curious, I wanted to pose a question, what is going to be in the freestanding building? And then do you also currently have retail tenants? That's a pretty tight squeeze over on that Greenfield mile road area there.
Public hearing is still open. Please give your name and address, please.
Good evening, council members. I just basically wanted to say that I'm in total support of the special use request.
Turn the mic off, turn the mic off. Ma'am, do we have a room?
And I do not have to give my name because it's already on the record.
We don't want people coming here thinking this is the way we act. Give us your name and address if you want to talk. Who is, who is controlling the camera? Turn the mic off.
Wasting my time.
You wasting my time. Please be seated, you are, you're no longer, if you're not going to play by the rules, you can't speak. Anybody else in the public hearing?
Do I have to give my name for a public hearing? Okay, since she's got me. Pamela.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Southfield, Michigan, four zero seven dash zero one five five. My telephone number is two four eight three four six zero four three nine. I just wanted to say that I am in total support of the special use request.
Ms. Chair? Ms. Chair? Ms. Chair?
I like the longboard metal siding, I think it's going to be great for Greenfield. And I'm looking forward to it. And let's put some diabetic-friendly food restaurants in your retail facility. And let's put some diabetic-friendly food restaurants in your retail facility. Thank you.
This is the last time we want to address this issue of anyone who comes to the mic. If they do not give us your name and address, you will not be allowed to speak. You will be escorted out of this room. We have rules for a reason, and we just can't have individuals come up acting like this is a playground. The public hearing is still open. Do we have anyone else? The public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Would you like to make a motion, please?
Yes, sir.
I have moved PSLU 17-0012, special use request of NOR. So far.
Okay, we have a rule by Mrs. Focassi and supported by Mrs. Mountabon that we approve the special use request number of PSL.
Well, you're making subject to the recommendation.
Recommendations in the minutes?
Yes, yes. Moved by Mrs. Focassi and supported by Mrs. Mountabon that we approve special use request PSLU 17-0012. In discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The item is approved.
Our next item for your consideration is the specific site plan review request. And we may have any answer to any questions that you might have.
Go ahead.
I was reading the minutes from the planning commission, and I noticed that the parking structure, because we're taking part of it down, which I think is a great idea because every time you drive by, you know, which one of the parking structure that goes to a major road. But I liked it, right? The, I, there was some back and forth with what, how much they're over or how much they're under in their parking spaces. I know they're going to need a waiver for that, but at some point it went from 5% to just over 10%.
Well, the, they reworked the site plan with the tenant space to be just under 10%. And there is no guarantee, but that's the threshold, the maximum threshold that the CBA has gone by as part of granting waivers for parking, is try to be under that 10%. I went by there today, right about a shower, evening traffic, and the Nine Mile parking right around the building was pretty full, but the entire perimeter was empty. There was hardly anybody on the north side. There was less than 20% of the entire first floor of the parking structure being occupied, and the top two floors were closed. So with the balancing and rebalancing of the site, restriking of the parking lot and tenant mix, with over 1,000 parking spaces, we think that they can work well within. I've talked to Mr. Nager. Other things that they can do is delegate tenant parking on the perimeter or even the parking structure on the both floors. And he's stated that with additional lighting and security to the parking structure, he thinks that more people will be using it. So for all those reasons, we're comfortable with that, within that maximum waiver of no more than 10%.
I just wanted to, most curious where Riley Fox, I know you're taking into account bike racks and that.
Yeah, we gave him, we gave him some credit for bike racks, which we can do. Also, there are some employee showers, which helps encourage people to take public transit and ride their bikes. So we gave him a certain percentage credit for that. We spent a lot of time on a four-by-four analysis and a tenant-by-tenant analysis to make sure we get the right mix. And again, if you look at, if you look at what's happening today, even with their future usage, we feel comfortable. It's in their best interest to make sure they have adequate parking.
Well, I think the best worst-case scenario is he runs out of parking, which means that the people are hopefully using that building, that metal building. That was my question. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Hold on, this is the mayor.
Mr. Nager, remind me again, this building was built in late 60s?
I believe it was, yes.
Yeah. Couldn't find the exact year, but this is, it's an important corner in our city and it makes you see this reinvestment in this building. And I also, to my recollection, this is probably one of the most significant improvements that the owners, former owners, and now you have the fourth or advanced, the advanced building. And the total, your estimate of the total cost of the construction roughly?
Well, thank you, and it is, it is a very iconic corner, and we are very proud to be involved with the community, partnering with Southfield on this. And I don't know if you're familiar, but we also have a center down the street. I'll make it brief. And so, you know, we take pride in this, and we also own the property down the street, Cornerstone Plaza, and we try to, we try to maintain that in a class A fashion. So we're excited about the opportunity here in the advanced building, and we're looking forward to giving this thing the face lift that it needs to keep it an important part of, you know, this corner of the Cornerstone District. With regards to the monetary improvements, we budget, and it's under a million dollars. I don't know if the direction was of the art, the art piece, but, you know, I think that that's where we're at right now, and I think we're under that threshold, so.
Well, honestly, I wasn't thinking so much about the.
Okay, because I came up in the discussion.
Passion of mine, so I can understand why you would say that.
There was a piece that was mentioned earlier in the study session, which we'd be happy to showcase on.
My great motivation is that, and I say this all the time, we're an established community, and I, it's all about reinvestment and renewal, which you're doing here, which is important to us. And honestly, I, the reason I was trying to nail you down on that is I have an address coming up next month, and I want to highlight pending council approval, of course. People like yourself, companies like yours that come forward and are spending significant dollars on reinvesting in our existing landscape, cityscape, so.
Well, thank you. And again, in the study session, I don't know if it was mentioned, but a lot of people from outside, you know, East Coast, West Coast, New York, and California had taken a look at this thing. And, you know, a lot of people, frankly, were not interested. We happen to live here. We know the area, we know the, you know, we know the building, we know the history. And to me, it looked like a tremendous opportunity for us to take this thing, potentially turn it around. When it comes to this particular retail center that we're going to put here in the front, while that, you know, is probably going to be under a million dollars, with the total improvements, there's other improvements going on inside the building, hallways, corridors, restrooms, roof, elevators, so there's a lot of new things happening there. And again, we're, you know, optimistic and excited to do these things one by one. We love to be able to, you know, we'd love to be able to have this done tomorrow. It is going to be a process, so we ask that everyone, you know, give us some time to execute our plan. But again, we've put our best foot forward. We've drawn it up and planned properly for the future, and, you know, step by step, we'll try to, to take this thing to where it's going. So thank you.
Well, you and your father certainly have a track record of being Southfield believers. And you're right, there are doubters out there, but I salute you for that. And again, thank you for making this reinvestment in a important corner.
Thank you.
I just also want to mention again, we do have recommended resolution. There are two waivers required. One is for the parking, as Mr. Mountabon mentioned. And there's a small landscape buffer waiver. But I will point out, currently, there's no landscaping on Greenfield, and they'll be installing just over seven and a half, about seven and a half feet. There's a great situation. So it's a minor buffer, but it will be providing landscaping buffering where one doesn't exist at all. And that's listed in our recommended resolution for approval.
Terry, I think there was one other question by somebody.
About the tenant mix.
And with regard to the tenant mix, just to address that, we don't have any signed leases yet. And, you know, there was a name on the site there, but nothing is done with that. So we're looking at a mix of restaurants and small amounts of retail, maybe a salon, maybe some services, and probably some restaurants, because that seems to be a popular, a popular business right now. So nothing is, nothing specifically, but we will begin marketing as soon as, as soon as we can.
Ms. Morris?
I know if there could, used to be, and there still is, a salon in the lower level of the advanced building that's been there for many, many, many years. Would they be extended opportunity if we decided to put the salon in the new area? Would they be extended opportunity to lease that space?
Yeah, everybody would be, would be extended that opportunity. And sometimes other salons would complement other salons. So, you know, different restaurants complement others. So I don't necessarily think it would be detrimental if anything would be helpful, but yeah, certainly they'd be, they would be reached out to as well as everybody else in the building. So we're, we're open to leasing.
Council?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Focassi?
I'm on the floor. I know you can sit down. I, I looked at this site plan. My concern is that, not for this one, but the amount of stores that we're allowing in the strips, for example, Home Depot on Southfield Road, and Michigan Bank was taken down. If you get there at a certain time, there's no parking in front. That's where everybody wants to park. And I look at across the street, same thing is happening at the Traverse Towers. You go to a certain time, then lunch hour, you can't park, and you try to park where the office people park, and that's full. So I just want to know that we changed the amount of parking space per foot, but the essence is, I think, I think we're not, depending on what is being used on those strips. It's a business that people go into and stay a long time, and then there's no turnover, and that takes up space. So I just want to throw caution on these strips that, that we don't want to see the growth take place, but we want to make sure that they work.
Yeah, you're correct. And what we try to do is find out what a balance of restaurants versus retail so we can calculate parking properly. The other thing, when, as we go through the zoning ordinance, for some reason in the past, the council adopted that freestanding retail had to have at least four tenants in it, otherwise it becomes a special use. And that's maybe something we need to look at. So that's causing more tenants to be in these, these retail spaces if they want straight site plan, because that's what we require. Otherwise, if it's less than that, it has to be a special use.
See, the, the thing that's happening is that the lunch crowd starts, start about 11 o'clock. Somebody goes along, up during 2 o'clock. And during that period of time, if they're all restaurants, and they don't move and eat and leave, then you have a problem. And so I just want to state, depending on what is the user.
Right.
Is how much parking you really need. And I'm just wondering if, in case even then down the street, you're on every green road, with all the restaurants there, you can't find a parking spot at noon. So anyway, even with the back parking lot.
Yeah.
So I know that we changed it, and I don't have a problem with this particular petition, but looking at any of the strip units that are being placed now, I, with their conjunction with the main user, that we have a parking for that main user, we don't get greedy, say, you know, add another tier on top.
Right, you're absolutely right. The only other thing I'll say is we did, we did look at making sure there's pedestrian connections, so if there is a tenant in the building, they can walk over to the retail center as opposed to getting their car driving over.
See, they don't park street, they don't park in the, in the parking deck, they, probably the first floor, walk across the street. But sometimes the other players are probably at full, but the parking on the, on the main parking spots are jammed. And so I just throw that up because of, depends a lot on the user of the commercial sites.
We have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move the site plan. PSP 17-0010, does that plan need due request for NOR support?
It's been moved by Mrs. Focassi and supported by Mrs. Taylor. They approve site plan number PSP 17-001. In a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Site plan number PSP 17-001 is approved. Move now for communications. But before we go to communications, council has rules of conduct in this particular chamber and also in any sentence that we have. And these are written. And this will be a procedure. Before we get into communication, no speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks on any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official, performs his or her duties. Now wait just a minute while this is going on here. It's getting noisy here. This is great. That makes a difference. Okay, well, I will start over, because this is fairly important. I mean, it's that we have rules of conduct in any setting that we have. And I've said this before, we made rules here that impact one to almost 200,000 people in the city of Southfield. And the people had to understand that these are rules and orders that we make, they are made in a very serious, professional manner. So I'll start over. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks on any officer, employee, or city council member, or any other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. And no persons are used threatening or abusive language when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent and so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed breach of peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council. And may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person receives, refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. With that, we open a communications session with Ms. Pamela Terrell. Please give us your name and address.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for that point of order.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for that point of order. My name is Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. I'm appalled at the thought that the mayor, the city administrator, and the council president is pushing to consolidate our multimedia services, or Cable 15, with the community relations department. Now, I'm sure at some point in time, it's going to come up about the fact that community relations used to be over business and economic development, they used to be over cable, they used to be over co-op enforcement, and a few other departments. And back then, when we had our previous community relations director, there was some inappropriate behavior that was going on in the city. It was purportedly some sexual harassment and creating a very hostile environment for several of our female employees that were working here at the time. As a result of that, to avoid a lawsuit, those departments were taken out of the jurisdiction of community relations. So I am not in favor of any kind of consolidation with Cable 15 and with community relations. Now, if you want to consolidate something, since what you want to do with cable and community relations is merely personal, why don't you think about consolidating business and economic development, which is basically not doing what they should do, and consolidate it with planning? And we can create a new division and name it Planning, Economic, and Business Development. So Shelley Freeman would work for Terry Crowe and not be a director with a manager's classification. Your moral compass seems to be off. You know, you want to read the rules about the conduct, you want to enforce the food and drink. Well, since your moral compass is off, let me refresh your memory. When you ran for council, my husband and I gave you a fundraiser. You never filed it on your campaign finance report. And you're the numbers man. You want all these reports. Why didn't you file our in-kind donation to you on your report? Now, you're also the treasurer of the Democratic Club. Your moral compass is off again, because you gave the mayor a check reimbursing the Democratic Club because he paid some expenses. You didn't get authorization from the executive club, or the executive committee to do that, or the Democratic Board of Trustees. So when you're talking about enforcing, look at what you're doing since you became the council president. It's went up to here. You let it went to your head, or you let it go to your head.
Thank you.
Thank you, residents. Thank you, residents.
Next individual being addressed to communication, Mr. Gerald Gerard Mullin. Please give us your name and address.
My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Three nights from tonight, on February 15th at 6:30 p.m., a public hearing will be held by this council in these three chambers. Council will be seeking public comments on whether this city should ask the State Liquor Commission to revoke Bar VII's liquor license because of shootings and other rowdy behavior having taken place on Bar VII's premises recently. Well, that was the game plan up to last Monday, February the 5th. At the February 5th council meeting, council deviated from the game plan and agreed to enter into a tentative agreement with Bar VII. Plus, council also still plans to hold the public hearing on February 15th, at which time council will not make any decision. In other words, a moot public hearing, with council abstaining from any vote. The only problem with this moot public hearing is this. Council members cannot abstain from voting. It is illegal. Why? Because the city charter says so. The charter makes voting mandatory on any resolution placed before council. In this case, the resolution is contained within the public hearing legal notice regarding Bar VII, published on January 18th, 2018. There are only two exceptions to this rule of not being able to abstain, both which don't apply to the current Bar VII resolution. And referring to Section 11.21, 11.21 of the city charter entitled Abstentions From Voting, and I quote, "A member of council may only abstain from voting on a question in which he or she either has a financial interest other than the common public interest, or if voting on such question would raise an appearance of improbity. The basis for abstention shall be stated on the record," unquote. That's charter law. Council's final, as I've said. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public communication. We will now roll into the council section and add some expenses accounts.
Mr. President, I'd like to move approval of travel expense for Dan Brightwell, if he's on any board to feel for a shop.
For.
It's been moved and supported, moved by Mr. Cruz, supported by Mrs. Morris, that we approve the travel expense report for Dan Olds Brightwell. All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, I also like to move approval of the travel expense for Dan Olds Brightwell. He tends to be simpac, 50th anniversary exhibition.
For.
It's been moved by Mr. Cruz, in support by Ms. Morris, that we approve the expense report of Mr. Donald Focaccio, attendant 50th anniversary of Simcom. All in favor?
Aye.
Approve. I abstain, Mr. Chairman. It is approved. And Mrs. Focaccio abstains. Additional council waivers. Mr. Commander Maugham.
A few housekeeping notes. This, the 14th of February, just in two days' time, is the last day to pay your 2017 winter taxes without any penalty. So please make sure that if you do have to pay those taxes, you go to our treasurer's office, they're open at 8 to 5. Also, in two weeks, on Monday, February 26th, from 6:30 to 8:30, there will be an organizational meeting for the Southfield Lathrop Crop Hunger Walk. They're looking to get more people involved. It's a fundraiser where they provide many different services, so they're looking for volunteers to help organize that. Again, that is taking place on Monday, February 26th, from 6:30 to 8:30, at the LTU campus in the management building, room M 218. If you have any questions, you can contact our human services department. Also, this coming Sunday, the 18th, we have Southfield Winter Fest that will take place here in the pavilion from 2:00 to 4:30 p.m. There will be free ice skating, face painting, bounce houses, horse trunk carriage rides. Unlike last year, where there was no snow, it was probably about 60 degrees. This year, I think we'll have enough snow to make it feel like a real winter fest. And again, it's all free. There are going to be a lot of activities, free ice skating, insider tip, they run out of skates quickly, so if you do want to go free ice skating, please arrive promptly at 2:00. I also want to give a special thank you to our public works department for plowing. I know that there are probably a lot of residents who were frustrated that their streets were not plowed by Friday morning, but the city does have 246 miles of streets to plow. They did their best. I know they started with the residential neighborhoods on Saturday towards the evening, and by Sunday, I think they were, by Sunday evening, I think they were pretty much done with all the residential streets. But that's, they were working 12-hour shifts, nonstop, to make sure that their roads were passable for emergency vehicles, and then especially for residents. So thank you to the public works, and also to our parks department, because they also do some plowing for parks, parking lots. And even I think at City Hall, they're the ones who plow City Hall. So thank you to all those who are working those long hours at the evening.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes, I just want to get an update. A couple of weeks ago, I asked administration for a vacancy, had a track report from Human Resources to give us a listing of all of our vacant positions and status of those. And hopefully, you followed my staff plan to fill them. I just want to know if administration or HR, I think, too much, know where he's at.
The HR department has started to gather the information. We have not finalized the report. I can tell you that one of the questions was hiring. From 2010 to June of 2014, there were four hires. Since July of '14, there have been over 150 hires. We're breaking that down by department and going through. I think right now, if you go to the city's website, there are, I think there are six or seven positions posted, or continue to go through, police inquire, but we are still working on that report.
Ms. Taylor?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that the finance committee had met in February, as a matter of fact, this last Friday, and the reports per the new ordinance were received from the clerk as well as the treasurer, and we will be passing that information on to council probably this week. We're waiting for Earl to just update his, summarize it a little bit more, and we're going to bring that to you. So I want to say thank you to both the clerk and to the treasurer for giving those reports to us in a timely manner. Thank you.
I want to address Mrs. Gerald's question about my finance campaign report. And when this came up last week, the next morning, I called the Open County Board of Elections, and whom we submit our campaign financial reports to. And I explained the situation to them that I didn't have the receipt, nor that I had a dollar amount when I submitted the reports. They said I can file an amended report, which I would do for 2015. And I had a letter that was drafted that was going to Mrs. Gerald, and I was on CC, the city attorney. But given that we've been dealing with a lot of snow, and I do have the snow that I had to clear myself, and I forgot I left home and left that draft. So just as soon as I get it, I will pass a letter to Mrs. Gerald stating, if you can give me a dollar amount...
I gave you receipts.
Hold on, the receipts on this place, that's why it's not in my campaign financial report. The election people indicated it's totally appropriate for me to file amended return. And the moment this happened, the next day, I spoke to the attorney, and I spoke to the city administrator, explained the situation to them. So the report will be filed, and just so that if you a note telling you to give me your best guess, or you have a receipt, that report will be...
That would be better.
So this is, so that particular item is taken care of with respect to my campaign financial report from 2015.
Thank you.
Well, I'll leave it at that. Okay, Mr. Mayor, anything?
Well, once again, Councilman Madam Baum did most of my reporting. I thank you for that. I would add that on the snow removal, we did receive a number of calls, emails, and calls over the weekend and today. We do have crews out that are out in 12-hour shifts from 11:00 to 11:00. They have 12 hours off, they come back for another 12 hours. And on Sunday, on the cruise, because of the freezing rain, we're pulled from neighborhoods to resalt roads. I was pleased to see today, as I was driving around the city, that many of the streets are totally clear. I'm not talking neighborhood streets, but I'm talking our major roads where the most traffic is, and many of them are even dry. So this particular storm was pretty rough on us, on our cruise, because it snowed all day Friday, we had another two inches on Saturday, and then we had that freezing rain an approximate inch yesterday. So it's kind of, this was a challenging event, but all neighborhoods have been cleared, as well as the city did bring in outside contractors to help. So we do our level best, and of course, as Councilman Manalbaum noted, we had, we do have 200, I think it's 46 miles of local roads to do. I know Mr. Fraser would be with us, if he were here tonight, he would always advise people to shovel their snow sort of up from their driveway along the curb so that less gets pushed in onto the driveway apron. Keep that tip in mind for next time. I don't think we're done with snow this winter. I would like also to make mention, just a shout out to Rosemary Allen. Rosemary was selected this year as the 2018 Martin Luther King Community Service Award Honoree. She's still with us, congratulations. And for those that don't know, this is the Martin Luther King's highest award, and it goes to a person each year who exemplifies the spirit and message of the late Dr. King. And I think I'm going to conclude there.
Mr. President, I too would like to just thank the Department of Public Works, as well as the Parks and Parks Bureau, the snow removal. Since Friday night, we've had crews working 12-hour shifts, 24 hours, 7. I'd like to thank our residents and our business community for their patience. We will be doing a review as to how we can make snow removal better. Now, it's a good opportunity. We've had more snow this year than we have had the last two years combined. And when you get a big hard, almost foot of snow, it's an opportunity to review our procedures and our procedures. And we are going to take a look at that. We did have our private contractors in use, as the council's authorized, and we're going to take a step back and look at that. The next couple of days, we had some warm temperatures. We're going to hit 41 degrees on Thursday. They're talking rain, so we're concerned about the challenges of freezing ground and water, but we will continue to manage the situation. And again, thank you to the community for their patience on the snow removal. Foot of snow is very challenging for all of us. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to add one thing to the snow removal, and I guess they've done a great job. The homeowners can help out, because that where the manholes are, they're, when they plow, they fill up some of the manholes. You go out, get a shovel, and clear it out without rain coming, and to get rid of the water would be making things a lot easier for everybody.
Madam Attorney?
I don't have anything this evening. The mayor did want a reminder of the meeting on Thursday at 6:30, the public hearing regarding the Bar VII liquor license, and so we'll make that reminder.
Yes, sir.
In this room. Yes.
Clerk?
Madam Clerk?
Treasurer, I have a new rule.
Just one reminder, we didn't have anything on our agenda or any updates tonight regarding the Sapphire Apartments, but I just want to let you, the residents, know that we are on top of it. We are receiving weekly reports, and we are still having our building inspectors go out on a daily basis, staying in touch with each one of you. So don't think... So don't think just because we did not mention the Sapphire tonight that we are not still working on it. We are, we are very concerned and we are staying on top of the Sapphire Apartments. So just so you know, thank you.
Mr. Brett Baum, that regard. I actually got a call on Saturday from a resident of Sapphire who called to tell me that she had a hot shower and she has heat in her apartment. And she was so excited that she picked up the phone and called me.
If you find me, Mr. President, they are within, they have sent a number of letters and requirements that they have within 30 days, or probably within 23 days. Also, a number of items that are going to be moved forward to the legislative committee dealing with boiler notices and requirements at the state as well as elevators. There's been some engagement, I know a number of council people have spoken with their lobbyists, and I've had some conversation with their lobbyists as well. But we do have some work that needs to be done with the state elevator process as well as the licensing of boilers by the state of Michigan and how they impact the local community definitely. What respect to Sapphire, we did have a regularly scheduled meeting for the next four months with the management and the owner of Sapphire. The city administrator, myself, legislative director, and, not legislative, but legal services. And the mayor. So there's a scheduled meeting that I insisted on the last time we met with them to give us an in-person update on, on the specifics of what was going on and the improvements that they've done there. Assessor, engineer, we have nothing to schedule. We have no witnesses. I'm sorry, ma'am, who are your representatives? I'm sorry, ma'am.
I was just going to ask if we could honor Mr. Art Van. I just want to acknowledge Mr. Art Van.
The what?
Mr. Art Van, who passed away today, he was a pivotal part of the business community. And I just wanted to see if council could acknowledge him. That's all I just wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. We'll take that up. We have no witnesses with that, believe me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.